Our call to the meeting's order was properly posted on May 8th and our prayer and pledge will be led by Danny Lambert. And Mr. Hooton will play after that.
Let's pray together. Dear Father in Heaven, you are an awesome God and we love you so much. We thank you for another day of life. We thank you for the beautiful spring days we've enjoyed here these last few days and the rains you have sent that nourish the earth, Lord. We thank you for this great country that we live in and the freedoms that we enjoy. I watch over the men and women who serve to defend our freedoms. Thank you for all those that have served before them and those that have given their lives to allow us to stand here today and pray to you publicly, Lord. God, we live in a broken world full of sin and evil and we have all sinned and given into temptation, but you loved us so much that you sent your only Son, Jesus Christ, into this world to die on that cross for each and every one of us. It's through his blood on the cross that our sins are forgiven and we thank you, God, for that gift. Thank you for another day of life. Thank you for your love. It's in your son, Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Hey, hey, hey!
Please, thank you. Page the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its individual liberties and every right to its own.
Very good.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of May 1st?
Almost, sir.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ladonna, you have a resolution?
I'm Lisa Hamblin from the Oklahoma County OSU Extension Center. I'm a family and consumer sciences educator, also the advisor to the OHCE Volunteer Community Organization, and this is Oklahoma's OHCE Week. I've got our president, Jan Beatty, from the Oklahoma County Genealogy Group, to read our proclamation.
Go ahead.
Whereas, we believe the family is the catalyst of our society, and whereas, the stability of the family is the primary purpose of society, and whereas, the Oklahoma and Community Education, or OHCE, is a strong influence, and whereas, in agreement with county, state, and national extension service for support, and whereas, in accordance with this agreement, we'll strive to continue to focus on significant betterment of strong family life for our communities across our state, and whereas, Oklahoma County OHCE consists of ten groups and over one-hundred-and-forty members who have served in many community service projects last year, donating more than ten thousand hours of service, and whereas, Oklahoma Home and Community Education members stand for the responsibility to safeguard the primary ideals for family life, and whereas, the purpose of this great organization will continue to be the furtherance of these ideals and the protection of the stability of the family, and now, therefore, be it resolved that the Oklahoma Home and Community Education of Oklahoma County proclaims the period commencing May 7th through May 13th, 2017, as Oklahoma Home and Community Education Week.
Is there a motion?
Almost.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question? I'm really interested in what you do. Do you give lessons over there? How do you work your genealogy activity?
Our genealogy activities, we meet once a month at the Oklahoma History Center on the third Wednesday.
Oh, that's cool, okay.
And then, this coming Saturday, we are having a workshop at the Extension Center. We're gonna have five exciting topics. If you'd like to come, we'd love to have you there.
I'd love to be there, but I work seven days away. Sorry. I really am interested. I understand that there are ways in your searches for folks, families, that you've discovered how to identify and find the bloodlines of a lot of African Americans now.
Yes, and one of our speakers on Saturday will be talking about African American research.
Wonderful.
He, one of our members, is also president of the African American Genealogy Research Group here in Oklahoma City, and they also meet at the History Center on-
Is that Mr. Head?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Andre.
Okay, all right. Well, I've, you can see I've been inquiring. I just haven't had the time, but I'm gonna do it.
Good.
'Cause I want, I wanna know somebody beyond my great, great, great grandfather.
We have a website, OHCEgenealogy.com, and there's a lot of contact information in there. If there's something in particular we can help you with, send us an email.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
I think they're awesome.
Wherever you want, we'll come to you. Mr. Hooton, do you have a resolution you're gonna present to us? Is someone here from Allied Arts? Okay, come forward.
My name is Laura Cuthem. I visited with all of you last year. I work at Allied Arts, and I'm sure many, many people in the room are very familiar with our organization, and of course, the arts have just been on the front and center stage with the Festival of the Arts that just closed a few weeks ago. For those of you in the room and in the county who are unfamiliar with our organization, we were founded in 1971 in an effort to unify the arts in our region. So, we represent twenty-six member agencies that receive our funding each year. These groups have to reapply. The allocations process is actually about to kick off in the next two weeks for our member agencies. It's very strict to be an Allied Arts member agency. You have to approve all of your outreach. You have to offer free programming. So, we have everything, of course, from Arts Council, which I already mentioned, to the ballet, the Philharmonic, the Museum of Art, some really incredible organizations that I personally am very proud to be a part of. My background is as an educator in the public schools and as a musician, so I especially love the trumpet opening today. But our agencies truly touch every corner of the state, and when we tracked our member agencies' educational outreach last year, we had over six-hundred-and-eighty thousand arts experiences for kids in our state, and that's really powerful. Again, the educator background in me, very proud. And even though twenty-two of our twenty-six member agencies are here in Oklahoma County, we have three down in Cleveland County and one a little bit further out in Shawnee, our member agencies truly touched all of the counties in our state. So, we're very proud to have outreach all over. And I know a lot of folks kinda have a preconception about what the arts is. We think about going into the museum and seeing a beautiful exhibit, or clapping politely at the Civic Center and buying tickets. And yes, it is those things, but it goes far beyond that, and the transformational power of the arts is something that touches every person in our community. We do, every year, through our campaign, have a short video. It's only about three and a half minutes long, so I'm gonna hit play on that. It's gonna show you kind of the personal side of our arts organizations.
Our mission is to inspire learning, curiosity, creativity. I would describe our team as diverse, creative, caring, and problem solvers. A lot of times, people think art separates, and they don't think about it as creativity in the mind. We start to set that when we incorporate more art that can achieve a higher level, whether it be academically, socially, behaviorally. The art program benefits student behavior dramatically. They're more motivated, they're more engaged, they're excited to come to school, it helps with attendance, it just helps increase engagement and motivation. We're teaching kids to learn about their learning, and it produces the kind of thinkers that we want in our schools and our communities. Allied Arts supported programs reach about one million people across the state each year, probably even you, or someone you know. We use the arts to help people, not just to express themselves, but to address real problems in their lives throughout their community. Art is what it needs to be for each of us. It can inspire. It can help people grow. Art can be therapeutic. It can help people cope. Brain injuries, amputation, stroke, they're relationships in like the hardest, most traumatic times in their lives. Art affects healing by providing an extra outlet. You're just making art, talking about art, looking at art, really take that to people and make it easy and accessible, and helping them experience easier and make their recovery better, it's like nature's difference in that way. Art takes away and lets us kind of go somewhere else if we want to. That can be a really positive thing. When you give to Allied Arts, you're giving to more than forty agencies and programs in central Oklahoma.
Before Lyric came, Plaza District was empty. It was deserted, it was unsafe. The Plaza District is a great example of neighborhood rejuvenation through the arts. The whole street is full of businesses. You just walk outside the door, and there's galleries, and live music, and Cray Bar is a wonderful restaurant. It's where people gather. The whole neighborhood has grown exponentially. The soul of the city happens when you leave your home, when you age with your neighbors, and that's what Live Theater always does. That's what the Plaza District now does. It's a really vibrant, exciting dream to live on and work on.
Allied Arts is learning in pink, and we need your help. Donate today at alliedartokc.com or Facebook. With you, art can change your life.
I know personally, I'm just very excited. Lyric Theater and the renovations that we've seen in the Plaza District are just one of many great examples of how the arts are helping transform our region and just truly driving home the fact that every person deserves access to the arts despite what your family might be able to afford, or if there's room in your school schedule. I believe very passionately that by removing those barriers, we're helping teach life skills and creating a new generation of active citizens. So, I'm here today to help you discover how you can get more involved. There are so many ways to give and get involved. You can give of your time as a volunteer. All of our member agencies need help from time to time. A great example that's coming up, Dead Center Film Festival relies on many, many volunteers. That's happening in June. Red Earth Festival, same time period, June Festival. All of our member agencies have great links on their webpages. Use our webpage as kind of a launching point for finding out how you can get more involved. Of course, giving of your dollars is also very helpful and impactful in our mission to help support and sustain the cultural landscape. We are thrilled to be here partnering with the county and making it very easy for you to get involved. So, our friends over in Mr. Hooton's office are helping with that. Michelle is gonna get some information out to all of our county employees. You're very fortunate to be able to opt for payroll deduction if you choose to get involved. And again, you can watch that great video if you didn't get enough of it the first time. Some of the things that our donors really appreciate when they do get involved, of course, any dollar figure is going to make an impact. We do have a member agency that offers fifty cent music lessons, so if you give a single dollar, you're helping two children access transformative mentoring and music literacy, learning about themselves, you know, persevering through the study of an instrument. Our City Card is a great discount card at over three hundred locations. If you eat out, if you use dry cleaning services, if you go to any of our member agencies, if you go to the State Fair, the Zoo, Frontier City, you're gonna save with the City Card. So, definitely check out the links on the webpage. You can also see all the discounts online, and then I'm leaving with Michelle a bunch of brochures, so check that out. And then also, this year, and I'm gonna kinda show it around here, we've got our Step Up Arts, which last year, for the first time ever, we decided to commission a local artist to create something for our donors. It was a sculpture of our Scissor Tail Flycatcher. This year, we have Joy Richardson, who's created something that is inspired by our state flag, Native American heritage. She's a local acrylic artist, so she, her canvases are usually very large. She shows her work at the Arts Festival. It's something that's not personally in my budget, but for a print of her work, it definitely works out pretty well. The Step Up gift this year is a hundred and fifty dollars. Again, with payroll deduction, you break that down into a monthly, it's a quite reasonable way to get some art and become an art collector. So, we're excited to offer that to our donors here at the county. Also, make sure you check out our webpage for Catalyst and Circle Club opportunities. Again, with that payroll deduction, it makes it very reasonable. It's a great way for you to connect and get plugged into the arts community. Some great events, we just had Artini about a month ago. It's the city's largest local art auction. So, our Circle Club and Catalyst Groups all got tickets to that as well. So, I encourage you to get plugged into your creative side. It's never too late for any of you. I know there's lots of musicians and visual artists in the room. Please invest in the arts community. It really does make a difference, and I just would like to thank the county for partnering with us in this way. So, thank you. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to mention, everything you said is absolutely right. There are people who would not go to school, who are not by the arts and/or sports. One of the things that I'm pleased about, I'm on the border of a museum across the street, they have these classes for people with Alzheimer's.
Yeah, Making Memories.
It is an awesome program. If any of you have relatives who are getting dementia, or, you know, they're progressing through that whole terrible disease called Alzheimer's, you probably should look into that, because I have been it, worked wonders.
It really does make a difference. Thank you for bringing that up. And they do that once a month at the Museum of Art. It's called Making Memories. It's on Monday when the museum is actually closed, but not just the Alzheimer's or dementia patient, but the caregiver is invited to that.
That's right.
Gives them an opportunity to kind of sit down, have a cup of coffee, talk to other people who are going through the same thing, and that's just as important, in my opinion, as the healing art element. But thank you for bringing that up.
You do good.
Thank you so much. Have a great day. We appreciate all you do.
Is there a motion for this resolution?
Almost.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seven through thirteen are our consent docket items.
Move the consent docket, subject to individual consideration.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any awards?
I have a couple. Good morning, Commissioners.
Okay.
The first award is for bid number 11704849, for roadway chip and seal for District Three. Invitations to bid were sent and three bids were received. And based upon evaluation of the bids, I'm recommending awards to the low bidder, Advanced Brothers Incorporated, for a total project cost of one-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, two-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and eighty-three cents. And the next award is for office furniture, that bid is CW17035. Invitations to bid were sent and six bids were received. And based upon evaluation of the bid, I'm recommending awards to the low single line item offered by Pinnacle Design Group, L&amp;M Office Furniture, Waring Products, Ergot Genesis Solutions, and Staples Systems Advantage.
Move the- Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Fifteen is some discussion about approval for a release voucher number for a crosstie ranch for erosion control bonds. Stacy?
Yeah, this project's now complete. It's an industrial park at Hampton Sooner, and we're returning their erosion bond to them.
Move the-
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
District One, you have items sixteen, seventeen.
Yeah, I'm gonna lean on Stacy.
Eric.
Eric, I'm sorry. You told me that. Eric, I apologize. I was not hearing you.
Basically, those are just items in regards to crutch show. The first one there basically is a letter that the Department of Commerce is requesting that we did not receive any other federal funds with the CDBG money that we received to buy out the houses that are part of the CDBG project. So, basically, what they call a duplication of benefits. So, we have not used any other funds besides the CDBG funds, and so that's what that letter is regards to. The other item that is below that there is basically relocation benefits for Miss Sepp, who was a tenant in one of the houses that we bought. Basically, just completing that process of getting her relocated to another residence, and part of that process is she does get some benefits, because we are buying that house.
Thank you. I'm going to move both items and ask, what a fantastic job Eric did one night. I got lost way out in the country at night in the storm, and I got there finally, and he conducted the meeting and did an outstanding job.
Second. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
District Two has items eighteen and nineteen, and eighteen is our annual agreement for the Shine Contract with Oklahoma City, where they are our principal funder for the program. And nineteen is to receive a couple of letters of temporary easement so that we can do some drainage work along Indian Meridian. I'll move both items.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
District Three has items twenty and twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first one, item twenty, is just to refer a jail trust document to the newly created committee to get the ball rolling on consideration of setting up the jail trust. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Let me ask one. Is this the final thing, or is there a process?
Because of the, I think it's about a month ago that the Board of County Commissioners approved the new committee.
Right.
So, this is just starting the process. There's a sample document that's attached to the resolution, but certainly, I think that that committee will work to improve, add, and then delete whatever they think is best for the county.
Okay. Thank you very much. Second.
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number twenty-one is just to accept the resignation of John Coburn from the Retirement Board. He's done a great job. Before that, we had Mr. Feist, who was our appointment to the Retirement Board, so we've been very blessed to have some great appointees, and we have a new one that we would like to appoint, and that is John Emerson, and we know that he'll also do a great job for all the retirees here at Oklahoma County. So, I would move approval of his appointment.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Warren, item twenty-two. You wanna talk to us about the space?
Commissioners, I appreciate this. As you all know, our warehouse is now full. That's about seven months ago, we told you it would be. It is full. So, we need more space. We're asked to utilize the space. I believe the room's one-thirteen. I think the boxes that we have right now stacked will fill that up, so we'll be looking for more space, and we'd appreciate if you'd let us use that space with the public defender.
Move it.
Second. I appreciate you looking for all the spaces we can utilize without additional cost. Thank you, sir.
I'd also like to thank Commissioner Vaughn for allowing us to use Shine Program. They have been a huge help. As you know, we have a labor shortage in the clerk's office for manual labor, and we really appreciate you sending them over to us. Thank you.
That's what they're there for. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Facilities Maintenance, item twenty-three, for the chairman to sign on behalf of the board for leasing departments using leasing space in the public building authorities.
Move it.
Routine.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Human Resources has item twenty-four. Dan, do you wanna say something?
Good morning.
Morning.
About a month ago, Mr. Warren approached me and asked me if our department would be interested in taking over their HR functions that they have with the retirement of the person that's been doing that. We said, yeah, we'd certainly be interested in that, and so we've had some discussions, and we've actually begun to do some work with them. We'd just like to formally memorialize this through the Commissioners and make that an official act.
Mr. Warren?
As you know, Teresa, after thirty-four years retired, she was handling our human resources. She also had many other duties. She juvenile, she helped with criminals, she helped with many other processes. What we're hoping to do, what we wanna do, is use human resources. We have a very high-trained skill with Dan. It's something we wouldn't have to train. It makes sense to our office to utilize this, and we plan on, and we have tested it. I had a meeting with Dan. I was very impressed with his education, the way he handles people, the way he takes matters serious, and I think this would be a win-win for all of us.
I think it's a great idea. I think we ought to centralize all of the personnel for Oklahoma County and not-
Man, it's rich. I love it.
And not have a bunch of recreated wheels in each different department. So, I think this is a cost-saving measure for the taxpayers. I'm personally in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with you so much, because when you have mentor organizations, you have problems that you find hard to resolve. So, thank you so much, Dan and Mr. Court Clerk. I know your name is Warren. I'm trying to give you a title here. Anyway, I appreciate you so much for doing that. I hope that there are other organizations out there who have your own small personnel departments, will at least consider joining our human resources board. They are par excellence. They do it right, and it saves us all a little problem. So, thank you so much, and I'm pleased to say that-
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Planning, Tyler, or Eric?
This is just a routine item. Basically, it's a final plat of the development that is occurring in District Two. Basically, it's a PUD that consists of four residential lots and a commercial corner. They've gone through the planning, commission process, and it's been approved, and so it's just in front of you to have the additional signatures for the class to be filed.
There were no protests or anything?
No, sir.
Okay. I'll move the item.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Eric. Joe, you wanna talk to us from twenty-six through twenty-eight?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Item twenty-six is somewhat related to-
Your mic.
Pardon? Somewhat related to an item that you just took action on. It's the court clerk and DA's storage needs. As the court clerk mentioned, their space for storage is full. That's the request to use some of the space on the first floor, which also relates to another item that we're going to bring to you here shortly. As the board may recall, you sent to the Infrastructure Committee a request to look at what might be feasible locations for storage for the court clerk and the DA. Upon reviewing those, there was a list of, I think, ten to twelve properties that Stacy and the DA's office had assembled through the assessor's office and other means. Our recommendation to you today is to take a look at the property located at 853 Robert S. Kerr. That's across the street to the north from the jail. It's one that Mr. Warren has previously mentioned as perhaps the starting point for identifying space for those two entities. One of the reasons I think the committee liked that is not only does it offer the storage space that those, the clerk and the DA may need, but there might be some dual functionality due to its proximity to the jail as well. So, our committee, as you know, we don't have the ability to delve into PBA. We're not, that's the trustees only, so we don't really have a means of identifying funding, but our recommendation to you would be that you look at this primarily as the starting point. It's not to tie your hands, though, and any other property that you would deem acceptable that you would consider that as well. So, that's that first item.
Move the item.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Item twenty-seven is the one that relates to the item that you just did for the court clerk. I was not here, but the board created or moved to create a benefits department. In June-
Pardon, Commissioner? Somewhat related to an item that you just took action on. It's the Court Clerk and DA storage needs. As, uh, the Court Clerk mentioned, their, uh, their space, uh, for storage is full. That's the request to use some of the space on, uh, the first floor, which also relates to another item that we're going to bring to you here shortly. Um, as the board may recall, you sent to the Infrastructure Committee, uh, a request to look at what, uh, might be feasible locations for storage for the Court Clerk and the DA. Upon reviewing those, um, there was a, a list of, I think, ten to twelve properties that Stacy and the DA's office had assembled through, uh, the assessor's office and other means. Uh, our recommendation to you today is to take a look at the property located at eight fifty-three Robert S. Kerr. That's across the street to the north from the jail. It's one that Mr. Warren has previously mentioned, um, as perhaps the, the starting point for, uh, identifying space for those two entities. Uh, one of the reasons I think the committee liked that is not only does it offer, uh, the storage space that those, the clerk and the DA may need, that there might be some dual functionality, uh, due to its proximity to the, to the jail as well. Um, so our committee, as you know, we don't have the ability to, uh, delve into PBA. We're not, uh, that's the trustees only. So we don't really have a means of identifying funding. But our recommendation to you would be that you look at this primarily as the starting point. Uh, it's not to tie your hands, though, and that any other property that you would deem, uh, acceptable, that you would consider that as well. So that's that first item.
Move the item.
Second. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay.
Item twenty-seven, um, is the one that relates to, uh, the item that you just did for the Court Clerk. Um, I was not here, but the board created or moved to create a, uh, benefits department. In doing so, uh, we needed to come up with space for that newly created department. In trying to, uh, locate, uh, potentially HR functions and benefits towards our closely related, uh, the committee felt that it would be best to utilize the space that's currently occupied by the abstractors on the second floor, uh, towards the east end, as well as potentially the space, uh, directly across on the north side, which I believe is the county clerk's MIS department. Our recommendation would, is that you would relocate the abstractors down to the one thirteen, the southwest corner of the, of this building, uh, the space that's currently previously used by MIS as a training room, which you now at least, uh, partially going to store some records there. So that is, that is that recommendation.
Move the item.
Well, um, do we think this is premature since we now know that the Budget Board for fun, vote to fund this has failed? I mean, I know that you're charged with a mission, uh, but would it be prudent that we hold off and see if the Budget Board's going to reconsider and finance this thing? I mean, I hate to build offices for people that we're not ultimately gonna have the money to hire.
Right. And Commissioner, I think that's a good point. I, I do think it would be, uh, perhaps acceptable to go ahead and approve this pending the funding of that department. So that we do know if the Budget Board were to act and to fund that, that department, we would know where they're going, and we would have a plan in place that would allow us to move rather quickly.
Sure.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, one of the things that I think we discussed maybe just a little bit in the Infrastructure Committee, and I don't know if it would be appropriate to get the opinion of our, our county clerk, but that would be the option of leaving the, those offices where they are with the creation of this new department. If actually the individuals who are hired to fulfill those functions stay within the offices that are already dedicated for that purpose. One of the reasons being you already have the file room and, you know, right there by those offices and things like that, instead of having to move abstractors, build out office space. Um, so I don't, again, that would be to amend the recommendation of the Infrastructure Committee. It could also be something that we return to the Infrastructure Committee for consideration, but that's just something that, I don't know if we could put that on the table.
Yeah. And Randy, I, I certainly don't recall that conversation, uh, in our committee meeting. However, I, I mean, it is obviously a, a potential option if the board chooses that. Um, I think the, the reason that the committee took action, uh, was because the board, we don't generally co-locate board departments with other elected officials. And so I, I believe that is the reason that we were asked to take a look at this, but certainly whatever the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Hooton, do you want to share your feelings about it?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, first of all, I think the, just out of feasibility, of easiness and the best thing for the taxpayers would be to leave the offices intact, let the people stay there. The file room's already in place. Um, they would in essence stay where they are. They would just be being paid. They'd go under someone else's budget, and that way, we don't disperse or move people out of their place. Our IT department, there were, it was about twenty-four thousand dollars to build that area out. I spent three thousand on just keys unlocking devices when I came into office. And so I, I'm very much against moving any of that. Um, as far as relocating the abstractors at some later time, if that's needed, we could discuss that. But I think the easiest thing would be people leave, stay in their offices, do the, what they're doing, and just handle the budget being different. If it's, um, agreed, that it moves on to whatever it is. I think leaving the people in their offices that they're in now is the best idea. And I think everybody will probably end up agreeing with that after it's looked at a number of times. But that will cost the taxpayers the least amount of money.
Are you talking about the people that are going with the benefits?
I'm talking about the people that, yeah, do the benefits now, that if, if they just stayed where they are, it wouldn't, wouldn't change really any prob, wouldn't cause any problems. They've been doing it there. They can stay there. The file room is already across the hall from them, and they can just keep doing what they're doing. And if they needed to walk down the hall, they could. Um, I, of course, want to do whatever you all wish as far as expansion of the HR department. But as far as for feasibility and, and not spending taxpayer money and destroying things that we've just built, in essence, um, leaving them where they are is, is just fine. I don't think there'd be any problem with that. But of course, that's up to you all, so.
And if you're not aware, the DA has ruled that, or let me just say, we've consulted with the DA, and we think that, um, the vote failed on transferring the money instead of pass. It was four to three against, not four to three, four. And so now, this department has been commissioned by the BOCC, but it has not been funded by the Budget Board. So there's no monies to hire, uh, any would-be applicants to fill these positions.
I will tell you that I'm absolutely confused about all of this. Um, so be sure and recommend to my son about the Alzheimer's courts over here. Um, but, uh, my understanding was that the clerk, and I don't, I don't know how to say it to make you fully understand, but the clerk was trying, was getting rid of these people. And, uh, because of that, uh, we were, we had lots of discussion about these people and where they would be. In my opinion only, if they're gonna be a part of human resources, then they need to be with human resources. I understand that, um, it might cost us a few dollars, uh, to get that connectedness together. But we spend a lot of money on a lot of stuff. And so consequently, uh, it's my belief that the whole human resources department work together. Now, Mr. Hooton, I'm, I'm not denying anything that you're trying to do. I, I think I understand, but I don't fully. I just have a difficult processor up here that tells me people in the same department will work together.
I, I understand. This, this is the, the first time I've heard of anybody saying we were going to get rid of or, or fire the HR, or I'm, I don't know anything about that. I'm sorry.
I don't mean to get rid. I don't, I'm not smart enough.
Okay, well, any, um, as far as I understand, the HR people, the people that are handling that have their jobs, their jobs are fine. I have no problems with them. I'm not planning on moving anybody at all. Um, those people, in fact, half those people were given raises in the first two weeks that I was here. So I think that office as a whole is fine, and I have no problems with them. They're not going anywhere under my auspices. I'm not planning on moving them. As far as relocating them to do as a team, to be in one place, that's of course, we yield to you all, and you all will do the right thing. And we will, of course, we'll, we'll, we're just here to help. And I'm just saying, whatever you all just decide, if you want to leave them where they are, doing what they're doing, and have it being under someone else's budget and oversight, that's fine with me. And of course, I've given my blessing. Um, leaving them in the offices they're in seems like the very simplest and cheapest thing to do, and also would be fine. But I'll, of course, we'll do whatever you guys choose. And so, but I'm not planning on getting rid of anybody. Those people have never been under any, um, I, I'm not, I'm not replacing them. I'm not looking for people, haven't, haven't been, so.
Quite the benefit of the people who are in this room and the folks who are looking at us on whatever that is they see us on. I just couldn't, I'm not smart enough to find a word that would, um, uh, describe to you what I was, uh, talking about. Uh, but I know that they're not gonna be with you anymore. I mean, these, these jobs are not gonna be with you anymore. And so in my mind, these people need to be where the jobs are for connectedness, for ease of, um, of, uh, the human resources department, period. Because they need all of their people, they have their discussions, that ha, just in my little mind, just have to be able to talk to each other in a shop. And you understand what I'm trying, okay, so, so let me clear it up. I don't mean get rid of. I mean, the folks aren't gonna be with you anymore. And, uh, it, I mean, the jobs aren't gonna be with you anymore. So why not put the people where the jobs are gonna be? My opinion. But, you know, I'm gonna go along with what you guys, it's that you're gonna do because you're really smart people and, and you're gonna do the right thing in here, and I'll just go along with you like I always do. No, like I most of this.
Well, there is some confusion because, um, we believed at the time of the Budget Board meeting that the funding was passed. And then after a review of the video and the members of the Budget Board consulting with the DA and confirming that there are no votes were there, it was determined later that the motion actually failed.
Which adds to my confusion.
Commissioner Johnson, I, um, I agree with you in part. If, if the individuals that are going to be doing this job weren't on the same floor as HR, say that, you know, HR remains on the second floor, and these individuals were on the sixth floor or off-site, I could see where there would be more problems in the communication. But considering they're just gonna be right down the hall, um, if we reject the relocation, that means nobody has to move. People that are doing the benefits-
Yeah, I don't understand.
Yeah, they don't have to move. The abstractors don't have to move. The MIS department that, you know, works with the clerk's office doesn't have to move. So besides saving resources, I think it saves a lot of time and, and headaches. So for that purpose, um, and again, we can always move them at a later date, um, if we see that it's not working out with, as they stay in that location. So, um, I would move to reject this item because it specifically recommends relocation of the abstractors and the clerk's MIS department.
We've actually already got a motion on the floor from her to approve it, so I guess-
I would draw my motion.
Okay. You want to re-take yours?
Sure. Move to reject the recommendations in item twenty-seven.
Is there a second? A second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay. Item twenty-eight, Joe.
Okay. Item twenty-eight, I'm gonna actually probably have, uh, David Barnes and Dan Matthews, uh, come up. Um, as the board knows, the, uh, the space where, uh, David is located down on one is currently, uh, under renovation. Uh, you approved expanding his area in order to provide us a place to meet in the event of emergencies. One of the things that, uh, we've had a, a problem with over the, a number of years is, uh, communication within this building. As you recall, there's been a lot of discussion, uh, over the PA system. That system really is antiquated, does not work well. And so David came to the Infrastructure Committee and asked that we would recommend to the board, uh, while they're down there doing his remodel, just going ahead and removing that system. David or, and or Dan can talk to you about some of the methods that we have in place for communication. But, uh, our recommendation would be go ahead and remove the PA at this time, and then let them talk about some of the options.
Thank you, Joe. Good morning. The issue with the PA system, as Joe mentioned, is the fact that it simply does not work, and it is ineffective when it does decide to try and work. There are two control points for that public address system. One is down in my office in the emergency management area here, and the other's in the courthouse that the sheriff's office has, uh, access to. Uh, as we've been through multiple different versions and options, and trying to come up with better ways to communicate within the building, that system has always been the system that was used as the bad example because of ineffective coverage and sporadic actual operation. We currently have other things in place. Um, with the assistance of Dan Matthews, we have implemented what you know to be Ready-Op, which is a mass communication system. We already have, uh, approximately six hundred and twenty-five Oklahoma County employees that are signed up on that particular system. That continues to grow with every severe weather event where people want on it. I would anticipate that to grow again today and tomorrow as we're expecting weather. But, uh, that gives us multiple methods to get instantaneous messages out to the entire group, both through text, through telephone, through email. Uh, those are simultaneous. We have documentation as to who's received a message, who has not. We also can leverage the voice-over-IP telephone system that we have to do messages in contact. We can also leverage the county email system. So there's multiple methods, which is from the emergency management perspective. What we preach and teach on a routine basis is shotgun effect. Multiple methods to receive information so that you're not dependent upon a single method. But our proposal today and the recommendation that we're requesting to have approved is to remove that antiquated system that, to be honest with you, tends to create more problems than it does solutions. Uh, it's inadequate and antiquated and, and rarely functions. In fact, you talk to Mr. Ponder, who is the gentleman with facility maintenance, who we work with a great deal in this regard. He'll simply tell you it doesn't work. Very simple. So that's our recommendation to you.
Okay. Joe?
David, if you could clarify to the board what impact this may or may not have on the actual courthouse, courthouse.
Okay. There are some places in the courthouse where this particular system does have speakers. Uh, as we found through our research, you may remember a project, we initiated a pilot project, I believe about two years ago now, looking at different methodologies to get public information and information to the individual rooms and throughout the hallways. And there was a lot of discussion about the public areas, about the private areas, the areas for the judges' chambers, all those kinds of things. And it's very sporadic. Uh, this would impact slightly some of those areas where those speakers may choose to work at various times. But again, the messaging systems that we're utilizing and with the assistance of Renee over in the court building and other methodologies that we've got in place that I described a while ago, we're actually doing better with the messaging, uh, particularly for urgent situations than we would be by relying solely on this public address system that, uh, again, is, is not the best system by far. We also would mention are looking at other opportunities. I know there are some who certainly like a public address system. And again, as I mentioned a while ago, shotgun effect is what we preach and teach in emergency management. And we're looking at other solutions that would involve a public address system of some type. However, as technology continues to evolve extremely rapidly, there's a lot better options than the hard-wired system that we've got with a few sporadic locations, the speaker locations around in both facilities. So we're also looking at those options as well.
Sir.
We also have, uh, we employ a quite manual system that, uh, Dan Matthews has put a great deal of time and energy into, actually. It's bullhorns. And if, you know, again, we get down to the basics. If we need to deploy those throughout the building, and people can go and make public announcements through the bullhorns, that can be utilized as well. So again, we've got redundancy there. And we laugh about that, but in the, out in the public safety world outside, uh, the bottom line is if all of the systems are out, we have police and fire vehicles that go around and get on the public address system in their vehicles, and they do the exact same thing. So it's, it's just a different version of that. But again, it is another layer, another depth that we have of communicating within a facility.
Okay. Mr. Warren, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, that's just question.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move the, move the item.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the claims?
Move the claim.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Has already changed the blanket? No?
Move the blanket.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any citizens to be heard. Hearing none. Commissioner comments, District one?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, I want everybody to know that The Lion King is, uh, uh, is at the Civic Center, and will be there till, seventeenth, I think it is? No, it'll be there till the twenty-third. And, uh, hopefully you'll get a chance to see. It's a marvel in art. We're talking about art. You ain't seen no art till you see The Lion King. And, and there's fabulous actors and that's it. And whoever designed those costumes has got to be a living, breathing genius. So if you get a chance, go see The Lion King.
Thank you, sir.
District three?
I second everything that Commissioner Johnson said. We're taking our boys, nine and five, to go see it. This'll be our third time to see it.
Yeah.
And, um, it's, it gets better every time. So Commissioner Vaughn is traveling, sends his best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any new business? Hearing none. Is there a motion to recess into executive session?
Move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we got a motion to go back into regular session?
Move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right now for action on item thirty-five. Is there a motion to name Commissioner Johnson as the designee for mediation and/or trial?
So moved.
Second.
With, uh, I think we need the caveat of Commissioner Vaughn being the alternate in the event she's unable to attend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.